Okay, why don't we get started? Uh, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority Board of Trustees. I thank all of you for accommodating the switch to a virtual meeting today due to the events in downtown Newark. Just a note, as you heard a moment ago, this meeting is being recorded. It's also being live streamed on our website. First, to recap our virtual meeting ground rules, please mute your device when you're not speaking, so we can reduce background noise. When you're making a motion or comment, please state your name so we know who you are. For those of you logged in through the website or the app, please use the chat box to indicate when you'd like to comment or ask a question, so that we can minimize the amount of people talking over one another. Ted will be monitoring the chat box. Are there any questions about this? Okay, to start the meeting, I'll ask Beverly Morris to read the Open Public Meetings Act and then take the role. Beverly?
This is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two, three, one, P L nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star Ledger, the Asbury Park Press, the Courier-News, the Daily Record, the Home Use Tribune, the Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald. It was posted in the Essex County Hall of Records in Newark. And now for the role. Bergen?
Here.
Essex?
Here.
I mean, would you please state your name, please? Hudson?
Tom Malavacy here.
Hunterden?
Susan Soloway here.
Jersey City?
Mike Manzella, present.
Middlesex County?
Charlie Kenny, present.
Monmouth?
Harry O'Connor, present.
Morris?
Even Shaw, present.
Newark?
Dolores Martinez Wood, and present.
Ocean?
Jack Kelly, present.
Passaic?
John Bartlett, present.
Somerset?
There are Sui, present.
Essex?
Chris Carnet.
Tom Drabek, present.
Union?
Eddie Jane Kowalstein, present.
Warren?
Jason Sernoski is here.
Governor's Office? NJ DOT?
Mike Russo, present.
NJ Transit?
Jeremy Colangelo, present.
Port Authority?
Jay Schofield, here.
Citizens Representative? Okay, we have. I'm sorry. Okay, we have eighteen voting members present and a quorum.
Great, thank you very much, Beverly. Uh, next is approval of the minutes. We have two sets to approve today. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions, first of all, to the minutes of the July tenth board meeting? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Morris will move the minutes.
Middlesex. And I have a second. Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Since that was our first vote, I'll note, uh, back when we were doing these virtual meetings regularly, we had it planned ahead, who would be doing the motions and seconds. We don't have that this time, so, uh, if you are, uh, moved to move, just, uh, jump right on in with your motion. So that brings us to the, uh, minutes of the August tenth special board meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Almost, Union County.
And a second?
Hunterdon County was second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. 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 Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Port Authority abstains.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the chair's remarks. So I'd like to take the opportunity to present my report to the board. Once again, thank you all for coming to this morning's meeting virtually. Uh, I want to take a moment to welcome Alexander Levy, who will be presenting on the Port Authority's George Washington Bridge pedestrian and cyclist access improvements. I look forward to hearing more from Alexander about the work on a key Hudson River crossing linking our region to New York City. Before we get to today's agenda, I want to thank everyone who made the trip to Patterson for our last board meeting. It was my pleasure to host you in Passaic County, and I hope those who attended enjoyed the tour of the Great Falls National Park and Hinchcliffe Stadium after the meeting. I also want to thank the board members who were able to attend the Special Project Prioritization Committee and Board Meetings on short notice last month. That nimble response by our board and the hard and urgent work of our staff, uh, that they undertook this summer is one of two examples just this year of how the hard work and attentiveness of this team has made a nine-figure difference in what we've been able to do for our region. Thanks to this board and the efforts of staff at NJTPA, Transit, NJDOT, we were able to add more than two hundred and forty-eight million dollars in federal funds to the Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, for four New Jersey transit programs. This funding was made available through the Federal Highway Administration's August redistribution process, allowing New Jersey to take advantage of funds other states could not get authorized. In my home county of Passaic, this action adds twenty point two million dollars for improvements to the Yogi Berra Drive Bridge in Little Falls and fifteen million dollars for a new bus terminal in the city of Passaic. The money is also funding much-needed projects in Essex, Hudson, Hunterdon, Middlesex, Monmouth, and Union Counties. Before that, earlier this summer, was another moment when our region might have lost out. You all remember the budget deal in June between the President and Congress that averted another debt ceiling crisis. Part of that deal was a clawback of unencumbered CARES Act funds that might have cost our region forty-four million dollars. This board had previously approved amending the tip to add that funding for New Jersey Transit Sustainability Project. But certain administrative steps hadn't yet been taken on the federal side. Thanks to a heads up from Congressman Pescarell's office that those funds were at risk and the great working relationship David and our senior staff have with their colleagues in the federal government, our governor's office, New Jersey DOT, NJ Transit, we were able to see to it within a matter of hours that those federal highway funds for our region were properly allocated and did not fall victim to rescission. Thanks to the quick work of everyone involved, that money stayed in our region and will be used for bus garage electrification, solar-powered bus shelters, electric minibuses, microtransit shuttles, and bike sheds. Speaking of the tip, today the board will consider adopting the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-seven tip and the accompanying air quality conformity determination. These are incredibly important actions. Approving the tip allows the subregions and partner agencies to use federal funding for design, engineering, and construction work throughout our region. Staff at the NJTPA in our subregions and at the partner agencies have worked hard to finalize the tip, which will fund more than one hundred sixty projects and various programs. On behalf of the board, I want to thank all of you for your efforts on this. Thanks to the federal bipartisan infrastructure law, we're investing more than ever in our region, fourteen point three three billion dollars over four years. You'll hear more about the tip and air quality conformity determination when Commissioner Kelly gives the Project Prioritization Committee a report. But I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone who submitted comments. We had five people submit comments during the August third virtual public meeting. And we received four hundred eighty-nine written comments. A summary of all the comments with responses from the NJTPA and partner agencies, as well as the full text of written comments, has been posted to the NJTPA's website. More than four hundred eighty of the written comments were about the Northern Valley Greenway, a concept for an eight-mile linear park along an unused section of CSX rail line in Bergen County. All but one Greenway comment, which opposed the project, asked us to add this project to the tip to make it eligible for federal funding. I wanted to directly address these comments myself, since we heard from so many people. The NJTPA supports the Northern Valley Greenway. It's included in the Long Range Transportation Plan that this board adopted in two thousand and twenty-one. Including the Greenway in that plan makes it eligible for federal funding. However, the tip is for projects that have completed conceptual planning and are in the design, engineering, or construction phases of work. The Greenway project has not yet advanced to these stages, so it is too early at the project development process for us to add it to the tip. In addition, projects cannot be added to the tip until they have designated and committed federal funding. If federal funding is awarded for the Northern Valley Greenway, or let's put it more hopefully, when federal funding is awarded for the Northern Valley Greenway, the board can add that to the tip through our amendment process. We appreciate the time everyone took to submit comments. Public involvement helps us ensure that the projects and programs we fund reflect the needs and wants of the communities that we serve. Thank you again, everyone, for joining us today, and that concludes my remarks. Any remarks from NJDOT this morning? Mike?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, I just want to echo your remarks and thank everybody for their cooperation, their responsiveness on those two special actions regarding, uh, the August redistribution and the CARES Act funding. Um, both of those moves will result in, uh, very, um, uh, well-needed investments in the northern part of New Jersey. So, um, just echoing your remarks, thank you for everybody who was involved in those actions.
Great, thank you. Uh, Jeremy, anything from New Jersey Transit this morning?
Uh, thanks, Jer, and, and you know, Mike kind of stole my thunder, because as you were talking about it, I was remembering kind of the scrambles that we were all going through. Um, and you know, we're really at this, uh, really exciting sort of generational time. I mean, I don't remember, you know, uh, an August redistribution with that kind of, you know, funding support in it. Um, and you know, the, the, the various agencies and, and organizations really came together, um, and did a lot of stuff far faster than I was, uh, concerned that we could do. So really appreciate, uh, everyone's support on that. And obviously, the, the board's, uh, willingness to, uh, you know, make a lot of accommodations and, and, um, you know, we're excited about the, the work. You mentioned a few projects, you know, we're excited about, uh, moving a lot of these projects forward quickly now that we do have this, this level of support. So thanks again, everybody.
Great. Yeah, well said. Superb job by the folks at Transit DOT, uh, and the Governor's Office for also moving fast with us on that, uh, earlier this summer. So thank you very much. And that brings us to the Executive Director's Report, letter E in the agenda, if you're following along. David, would you please, uh, present your report to the board?
Yeah, thank you very much, and good morning, everybody. Um, before I give my report, I just want to say, uh, a very quick, uh, thank you to someone who's, uh, on the, on the meeting today, and that's, uh, Assistant Commissioner Mike Russo of NJDOT. Um, he didn't mention it himself, but, uh, he's retiring. I believe his last day will be the end of this month, and Mike, I think that makes this your last NJTPA board meeting. So I did just want to say, uh, you know, thanks for everything you've done for us over the years, and it's been good working with you um, on these meetings, on MPO collaboration meetings, and a, and a ton of other stuff over the years, and I, I wish you the best. And, uh, I just wanted to add that before we got, uh, too far into the meeting. So, thanks, and, uh, you know, certainly if we were there in person, we'd all give you a real round of applause rather than a virtual one, but, uh, good luck, and it's, it's been very good working with you over the years.
Thank you, David. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
It's been, been a very rewarding, um, experience, particularly my experiences I've had with, uh, the majority of my career with NJTPA and their staff. It's been a very good run. Thank you.
Thank you. That's appreciated. So, as, um, as Commissioner Bartlett noted, uh, today the board will take a crucial action to support regional transportation, that is approval of the tip and the air quality conformity determination. Uh, since our last meeting in July, NJTPA central staff and our partners have worked very hard to put the final pieces in place for this action, uh, including, uh, the thirty-day public comment period that was referenced that ended on August twenty-second. And I would just like to, uh, echo the chair in thanking NJDOT, New Jersey Transit, the subregions, our central staff here at NJTPA, uh, for their efforts over many months to develop these really important products that are, um, the really part of the core of what we do as an MPO to meet our federal requirements. Um, and I certainly echo the words, um, thanking everyone for jumping quickly on board to make sure that we could get all those, uh, funds authorized that we needed to for August redistribution and for the potential rescission. Um, there's a lot of great work that's going to happen because we were all able to do that, so thank you. Um, in other news, I'm, I'm happy to announce that central staff has finalized and posted, um, several other key planning products on our website. Uh, one notable one is the Regional Active Transportation Plan, which identifies a conceptual network of priority investments to improve opportunities for walking and biking and provides a strategy guide for implementation. Uh, it's important to note that the Active Transportation Plan grew directly from the priorities of Plan Two Thousand and Fifty, our region's long-range transportation plan, uh, demonstrating our ongoing commitment to expanding walking and biking where possible throughout our region. You'll hear a little more about this in the Planning and Economic Development Committee report as well. And as we'll hear in just a moment, the Port Authority is doing its part, uh, to improve walking and biking through upgrades on the George Washington Bridge. And related to this effort, the NJTPA is coordinating with our counterpart MPO across the Hudson River, the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council, better known as NIMTC, on a study that's looking at the feasibility of a separated walking and biking path along the Palisades Interstate Parkway and U S nine W, uh, connecting the George Washington Bridge to the Governor Mario, um, Mario and Cuomo Bridge, formerly the Tappan Zee Bridge, which also has upgraded, uh, walking and biking facilities. So we'll keep you all updated as that work progresses, uh, on the, uh, New York side. Another key product recently posted to our website is an update to our two thousand and seventeen Coordinated Human Services Transportation Plan. Central staff completed this update, which includes new demographic data, findings from a stakeholder survey and focus group, and re-prioritized recommendations to better address the transportation needs of seniors, low-income people, veterans, and individuals with disabilities. Uh, the updated plan addresses key concerns such as the need for flexible travel services, centralized information from various providers, improved driver training, and safe and convenient access to destinations. Uh, the, the state's transportation management associations, or TMAs, along with nonprofits and local governments, are important implementers of this plan. Um, an example of their efforts was highlighted in a presentation at the RTAC meeting in August. Uh, that focused on the TMAs' travel training activities to help older adults, those with disabilities, and others better understand and use transit services in their area. Uh, the training includes such things as group field trips to malls on public buses. It's a, it's an innovative and a worthy program, and I think it's a good example of the kind of work encouraged by this plan. I'd also like to note that final reports for subregional studies by Essex, Hudson, and Union Counties have been posted to our website. Uh, two other studies are getting underway. Jersey City is updating its traffic calming toolkit, and Newark is creating a bike plan. Um, again, all these studies reflect a wide range of needs identified and prioritized in our long-range transportation plan. And central staff is now reviewing proposals for next year's round of subregional studies. Um, and the board members can see further details on those activities, on those activities, and a great deal of other NJTPA work in the central staff highlights distributed prior to today's meeting. Um, also regarding uh, current subregional activities, four county-led local concept development studies previously approved by the board are now underway. Um, there are now consultants on board, schedules, outreach plans, and other elements are being developed. Those studies are quarter improvements to County Route Three in Manalapan Township in Monmouth County, safety improvements to Easton Avenue in Franklin Township, Somerset County, a congestion mitigation project along Kennedy Boulevard and County Line Road in Lakewood in Ocean County, and also exploring options for the Lenape Island Road Bridge over Indian Lake in Denville in Morris County. Uh, stay tuned for websites for each study. Those will be launched shortly. Um, turning to, uh, some upcoming events, this Thursday, central staff will be hosting the first of three webinars on local safety action plans in cooperation with the Federal Highway Administration's New Jersey Division Office and the FHWA Resource Center in Washington. These webinars will complement work the NJTPA is doing to assist subregions in developing these local safety action plans, which provide a framework for identifying, analyzing, and prioritizing safety improvements on local roads. And having one of these plans in place will allow subregions to qualify for federal, uh, safety implementation grants and will also, uh, help them just take advantage of other, um, various, uh, safety funding sources. Uh, the initial webinar, again, that's this Thursday, will provide an overview of local safety action plans. There'll be a session on September twenty-eighth that'll focus on safety data. There'll be a third webinar on October nineteenth that will be on countermeasures, implementation, and evaluation. Uh, we'll also be hosting a workshop, uh, here, well, not here, but at our offices uh, in November for NJTPA staff and subregional planners and engineers. Uh, that will, that will only be open to, to those folks. And, uh, you know, I really urge all the subregions to take advantage of these webinars, uh, to take advantage of the opportunities to put together a local safety action plan, and, uh, we've, we've distributed, uh, information about these webinars. It's also available on the, on our website, on the calendar, and, uh, keep your eyes open for an email about the, uh, the fourth workshop for NJTPA and subregional staff. Um, regarding some funding opportunities, uh, NJDOT is currently accepting applications for the Safe Roots to School Program through November seventeenth. Uh, NJTPA and the other MPOs work with NJDOT in administering this program. And, uh, it's important to note that applicants, which can include counties, municipalities, and school districts, are required to arrange pre-application meetings. Uh, look to the, to the, uh, to the web to find more information on that. Uh, there will be, uh, a final webinar on that program held on October fourth. Uh, you can see more on that on the NJDOT Local Aid webpage. Uh, one note is that the program has traditionally been open to schools serving kindergarten through eighth grade, but as of this round, high schools are now also eligible. In addition, we are currently accepting applications to the Vibrant Places Program through the end of this month. Uh, in this program, we work with Voorhees Transportation Center at Rutgers to offer technical assistance for creative placemaking projects, such as using arts, culture, and other community assets to enhance streets and public spaces. Uh, this work helps strengthen local economies and quality of life. Information's available on our website or the Together North Jersey website and has been emailed to the RTAC. Um, we urge y'all to please share this information with your municipal contacts. Um, regarding federal funding, under IIJA, uh, application deadlines are approaching for the Reconnecting Communities Program. That's September twenty-eighth. And the SMART Program for Advanced Technologies, that's October tenth. Uh, we'll continue to post these grant opportunities to our website and to, um, distribute emails to our RTAC members, uh, letting them know, uh, about these opportunities. And then lastly, um, I'd just like to note that we're continuing to recruit members for our Up Next North Jersey Young Adult Advisory Group, uh, which is open to residents of the thirteen NJTPA counties between the ages of twenty-one and thirty. Uh, additional information on that is available on our website, or you can contact, uh, me or other, other staff. And with that, I'll conclude my report. Thanks very much.
Terrific, David. Thank you very much. Well, that brings us to our presentation. So now we will hear from Alexander Levy, a principal architect in the Design Division of the Port Authority's Engineering Department. Uh, Alexander leads and collaborates on the design of infrastructure for cycling and walking, mass transit, and aviation, focusing on innovation and placemaking, accessibility, and connectivity. Uh, Mr. Levy will be introduced by Jay Schofield, the Port Authority's representative on this board. So, Jay?
Jay, you're on mute.
Yep, I see that. Thank you. Um, thank you, Chairman Bartlett. It's always great to be here at NJTPA, and it's a pleasure to provide an update on this project that we've worked on for so long. You, you've all been hearing about it off and on for the past few years. Now, NJTPA coordinates regional transportation planning primarily for the use of federal funds. The George Washington Bridge doesn't use any federal funding due to limitations, um, associated with the tolls. So the two-billion-dollar program that we're continuing to rehabilitate this engineering landmark, which is approaching the end of its, uh, first century of service, is funded entirely by Port Authority revenue. Nonetheless, the George Washington Bridge is of interest for NJTPA due to its regional significance. It's the world's busiest vehicular, um, bridge. It's the region's primary goods movement corridor, and for today's topic, it's the only direct crossing over the Hudson River between New Jersey and New York for pedestrians and cyclists. For a long time, Port Authority operations staff and transportation engineers worked hard to keep the bridge open to both pedestrians and cyclists with a high degree of safety, despite the existing conditions that were built decades ago. But real physical improvements were really needed, and as you're about to see, we have invested in significant steel and concrete infrastructure. In a prior position at the Port Authority, I had the opportunity to work on the initial planning for the bike and pedestrian improvements. A frustration I think many planners have experienced is working on a good plan that, you know, had a good vision, had buy-in, resources were committed, and projects moved forward, but then something just got lost in design, and it didn't turn out very well after so much work by so many people. Fortunately, this is not one of those cases. This project went the way planners always hope their plans turn out. I was fortunate to turn it over to a good design team that saw the vision and filled in the design details to make this a reality that works well for everyone who uses it. This was due in part to ongoing collaboration after the handoff and largely due to the fact that Alex is a cyclist himself who grew up using the bridge. So at this point, I'll turn things over to Alex. Alex, all yours.
Thanks, Jay, and thanks, Chair Bartlett. Uh, thanks so much, uh, for giving us the opportunity to talk about um, the George Washington Bridge. I'm going to try to advance the slide and make sure that it works. There we go. Can, can you all see the screen?
Yes, we can, Alex.
Okay, thanks, Ted. Thank you. So you, you, everyone on this call knows the, uh, knows the port district and the region. This is a graphic we use to describe a lot of our assets and our facilities throughout the, throughout, both, obviously, both states and beyond. Uh, beyond this map, obviously, we have Stewart Airport up in, uh, Rockon County. Uh, it's, sorry, in, um, near a beacon on the, on the other side of that, so. Um, let's focus today on the George Washington Bridge, uh, in the Palisades on both sides of, of the river. As Jay said, yeah, this is, one of the miracles of this bridge is that it, it's location, right, that it was, it somehow, it was chosen fortuitously to have the, I would say, for its navigable height for, uh, for very large ships. It was able, with very little uh, approach length, to, to span a mile and a half without needing tremendous ramps like we do on many of the other regions' bridges. Um, it's, it's actually, I mean, it's something that we, we take for granted, but the fact that we're up in the Palisades on, in Fort Lee and then up in Washington Heights on the other side makes for a, a natural bridge uh, across the river. Um, and what was missing in this bridge for the last hundred years really is an accessible way to cross if you're not using a car. And that's what we set out to do. Um, as you can see in this photo on the right, Althmar Aman, uh, who was the original engineer of the bridge while at the Port of New York Authority, um, envisioned having a sidewalk, but the sidewalks originally went from anchorage to anchorage. They did not connect back. Strangely enough, they did not connect back on both sides to the, to their respective, uh, approaches, their respective launching points. So there was this miraculous sidewalk, but it was disconnected. Uh, you needed to climb stairs, go through a turnstile and climb stairs to get to the sidewalk. So, um, now with this, I'm hearing feedback, I guess. We'll, we'll find out who, who that's from.
Yeah, someone, yeah, someone just joined by phone. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. Um, there's a bigger context here that, uh, all of you are very aware of, which is, uh, a very large multi-year program to, as Jay mentioned, to restore the George, right, and, and and what it did is it gave us the opportunity, among other things, not only to replace the suspender ropes and, and check the main cable and, and do a whole bunch of upgrades. It was to finally consider accessibility across the bridge for people walking. Uh, uh, you know, making their way across without a car. Um, many of you have had the opportunity since February. We opened the North Walk, yeah, on Valentine's Day. And now this North Walk has been incredible. Uh, it's, the use has shot up. There's an incredible amount of, uh, volume even during the week. It's not just a leisure bridge. It's now become a, uh, more than ever a commuting, a commuting connection between, between the two sides of the river. Uh, delivery cyclists obviously are using it as well. There's a new demand, uh, catchment area. But let's go back to the ADA, which to us was the starting point of how we wanted to make the sidewalk reconnect to its environments on either side of the river and allow people to go unassisted across without any need for actual ramping. We made very, very shallow approaches to touch, to connect to the mainspan sidewalk, so that someone can go unaided in a wheelchair and make their way across the the Hudson. I'm just going to quickly through the phases. Twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-three is what we've just experienced. We've been we left the south, the existing South Walk open that all of you know very well, those of you who've used the hairpin turns and the and the strange vehicular ramps that you have to share to get across the river. That remained open for the last several years, and now it's just been closed. We're working on it now in in Phase Two. This is our Phase Two. So we're we have the North Walk, the new North Walk open, which everyone is is enjoying. And we have the South Walk under construction along with the replacement of all the suspender ropes and the widening of the towers, which I'll get to very soon. Hold on. And then our final phase, which will be, which will be its permanent operations, will will separate cyclists and pedestrians, north and south, like we do in many of the other area bridges, like Williamsburg Bridge and Manhattan Bridge. We'll have cyclists riding, continuing to ride on the north side, and we'll have people in wheelchairs and and on foot using the south side. So they'll it'll it'll actually make for an even safer condition after twenty twenty-seven. I don't know if any of you remember what I'm about to show you, but I'm going to go through very quickly and show you previous conditions and new conditions so that you understand just how how much of a difference we we can experience on the bridge today. It used to be that whatever connections there were to mainspan were navigated largely through stairs or or hairpin turns or very steep sections. And I do remember often carrying my bicycle over my shoulder when the North Walk was the one that was open because the South Walk was closed to for maintenance. And I do remember taking a spill down the entire flight of these stairs myself and breaking my collarbone. So I remember it extremely well. The condition on the right now is a very gentle slope, but this is the New York approach. And we've used a contrasting color rub rail that helps with the visual field, even for people. It's not only for people who have visual impairments. It's for any user going a certain speed. They're able to navigate haptically and see what what they're doing and where they're going. It creates, it promotes safety. Previous condition at the Hairpin Turn on the south, we all remember these incredible jams of people going down and coming up. It was in some sections, it was only two and a half feet wide. Now we have this beautifully generous switchback on the Jersey side, which is fourteen feet in the turn and eleven feet at the at the lengths as you reach the switchback. A lot of room to turn in two directions. I'm sure many of you remember the the weekend morning gatherings of all the cyclists who want to go up to Piermont, Nyack, West Point, and Nine W and River Road, and they would just gather on the streets pretty dangerously, actually, because cars would be coming at full speed around these corners. Now we have a plaza. We have entry plazas on both the New York and New Jersey side. This is a depiction of the New York Plaza, Cabrini and One Eightieth Street with bollards, pylon to tell you where you are and a gate that it's, you know, gives you a sense of the placemaking. And it marks George Washington Bridge, so there wouldn't be any confusion that you're about to connect to the to the the George Washington Bridge itself. We all remember the South Walk arrival in Fort Lee, where you just pass a vehicular gate that wide with the oversized vehicles would would gather at night with their permits and drive over the bridge. This is where we used to go through, and now we have placemaking happening. This is the North Walk on President's Day earlier this year. Snapshot of the first site, some of the first cyclists. These were these were tourists from overseas who were using using this on the President's Day weekend and asked me to take a photo of them. Our previous condition on the mainspan sidewalk had just a parapet, the the original parapet and a lot, sort of a chaos of of use with with not that much indication of of not only rules of the road, but also kind of visually your visual field, how you were moving. Now we have a much clearer sense. We have a safety fence. We've got a continuous rub rail. We have markings and we have speed. We have guide guidance for speed and and upcoming obstacles. This is a clinch. This is a very important element of the mainspan. It's the tower widening. It was a late-breaking element in the in the design before we we started construction where we managed to figure out with structural a way to add platforms around the towers to make maneuvering around the towers and through the towers much safer than than it has been in the past. People come at a diagonal. They see each other. They have a lot of visual distance and continuity. They see people around turns. And they can come it and and you'd think that people start to go faster. It's not what happens. What happens is you've got a lot more sight sightlines and safe behavior. Because you have, instead of having a constant line through the middle of this, like a territorial division, you basically have a suggestion of a shared, which is what we're trying to promote, this idea of a conscious, shared use environment where where you you see other people coming, you respect the distance, you monitor the distance as you draw, as you go, you keep your handlebars away from theirs, and you move through and you and you and you take in these incredible sights of Palisades while you're doing it. So I'm now I'm going to go into elements that I that give give this the character it has and sort of this centenary celebration of the bridge now, this new placemaking character that we tried tried our best to give to the bridge. On the left, you have the entry plaza in New York City. At Cabrini, again, I said Cabrini Boulevard and One Eightieth Street. It plugs directly into the street grid. It's quite, it's quite amazing. You come down One Eightieth and immediately right off the other side, you have this plaza, and the street continues onto the bridge at less than five percent grade, which is great. It doesn't require landings. It doesn't require handrails of any kind if you're in a wheelchair. Then on the right, we have the Fort Lee entrance, North Walk. Beautiful, beautiful, long rectangular entry with a bypass stair that goes up to the viewing platform, which we'll talk about soon. And then these switchbacks that get you again, less than five percent grade all the way up past the along the Palisades wall and past even the Long Path entrance, which I'll show you soon. For those hikers who like to connect to the hiking paths, they go up to Albany, all the way up to Albany, three hundred fifty miles of it. And I'll show that in a minute. This is a a grouping of of the viewing platforms and interpretive displays that we've added to this journey that make it more of a emblematic of its landmark status and the fact that it's it has a narrative that accompanies it, a history and a future. So one thing we did design in-house ourselves as well, along with everything else you see here, is a medallion, sixty-inch cast stainless steel medallion that has the geometry of the cable section of the of the cables that were developed by the Roebling Company. And it's two states of the braid, right? So it's a cut and then it turns and then the the cut is seen in in Baur relief. And that sits at all the viewing platforms on the on the shared use path to to memorialize and and celebrate the this feat of of engineering, the of the suspension of these bridges, not just George Washington, but many of the bridges of the region. Well, and and the country. We have, obviously, we've we've been, we've embedded in granite. We put the New York and the New Jersey state signs at the at the at the border and the mainspan. We have branding signs on the back of signs that tell you how fast to go, that a turn is coming. On the back, we actually call out GWB with that with that cable section graphic. And then we have these bypass stairs with lighting that help you even at night. I've even seen since February, I've even seen cyclists who are so impatient to use. Some of them don't want to use the switchbacks. They simply carry the bike up these stairs. But you know what? Choosing to take the bike up the stairs is one thing. Having to was another. So I'm perfectly happy. If I were in some rush to on a commute, I might contemplate carrying my bike up these stairs too. This is the Jersey side with the Palisade Rock to your left, looking at the New Jersey Tower in the distance. And here's a here's a sign on the mainspan that talks to you about the towers coming, gives you a heads up, a heads up warning that you're going to have to be, you know, changing direction to get into the towers. As you can see from these photographs, there's there are a lot of pains were taken in design to make sure that this works safely without signage, meaning everything points towards a safe journey as you move at the speed that you naturally are moving at, whether it's on on foot or by bicycle or on in a wheelchair or even as a child in a push bike. You have this, again, I think these lime, these federal bike lane lime green rub rails are a constant on the approach paths that reach the mainspan. We have mixing zones that we designed with our traffic engineering colleagues. Crosshatching, it's 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 familiar for those who have been in Gridlock, Sam's neighborhood in New York City, where you have Midtown Gridlock hatchings at the at the at the intersections. This really speaks to something slightly different, which is caution in the zone where people are walking and biking coming off the viewing platform. More of more of these, more of these pieces of vocabulary. We have bollards where people really have to get off and change, change locomotion, right? If someone's on a bicycle and wants to use the viewing platform, they pass the bollard, they get off, they walk their bike onto the viewing platform. And the bollard helps them understand that. It also helps control maintenance vehicles from, you know, entering and exiting at too too high a speed if they have to remove snow other things. The photo on the upper left is from the Long Path stair that goes to the Palisades Interstate Park Long Path system, trail system, and connects down to our one of our switchbacks on the Jersey side. And you see the same one, lower right-hand side, it's seen stair from the path itself looking up into the Palisades with the trees. It's it's kind of surreal to walk up a urban stair right up into a forest. So it's a it's a very beautiful connection. I recommend that everyone try it. Now I'm going to, for those of you on the call that really want to see the design and how much we improved this shared use path on the North Walk, we're focusing on the North Walk as it's the one that just opened this this year. So this this is a diagram showing all the pinch points, all the stairs, all the underpasses, all the areas that we really, really have suffered for the last few decades of trying to get onto the mainspan as as a non-motorized user of the bridge. The Hairpin Turn that you've seen photos of is on the south side, but we're going to focus on the north side today. This is the the design condition where we connect to Cabrini and One Eightieth. We have a plaza. We go through a nice, gentle question mark turn and end up end up at a viewing platform, an elliptical viewing platform that we can peel off the path to use and enjoy looking at the Palisades and the bridge itself, then come back on to the to the bridge path and go all the way to the anchorage in the mainspan. We just talked about this. I'll I'll continue. This, so I'm going to go through a series of these where we have a previous condition, a design condition, and then the current condition. It's kind of a three-step process. Bear with me, but visually it's very strong. This is this is what used to happen at Cabrini and One Eightieth. We look at a kind of tree line and bear claw fence and a playground, but no connection to the bridge here in this view. Then we, this is what we were designing. This was a rendering we made in-house several years ago, trying to envision how we were going to get ourselves to the mainspan. And then now this is the the reality as of February. Here is the viewing platform to the right that we added. Here's, this is the vehicular HR that the one of the ramps that allows motor vehicles onto the bridge. We followed, we, after curving off Cabrini, we turn and then we we join the side of that and cantilever off it and then go to the and go to the anchorage. We'll show you in a minute. But you see in the distance these stairs. These were the old North Walk stairs under the vehicular path that would then take you up onto the mainspan sidewalk. I'll show you what the main condition is now. This is this is the viewing platform, I guess, this past February, just before opening. And we have an interpretive display, a set of interpretive display panels that talk about the history of the bridge with some that are empty for the future chapters of the bridge for its for its upcoming chap, you know, North Walk, South Walk opening in twenty twenty-seven and beyond. New Jersey side, I'm sure many of you are familiar, those who used to use the Long Path, there was an overpass, and I'll show that to you now. And it had many different pinch points in places to take a spill with a bike on your shoulder. This is now the condition, the design condition. We have a big plaza at at Fort Lee on the on Hudson Terrace. And I'd like to, for those of you in New Jersey DOT, I'm sure you appreciate what's happened. We are, we offered, and I think we've integrated an entire upgrade of the biking infrastructure of Hudson Terrace down to the Fort Lee historic park, widening of the sidewalk, a bidirectional bike path, good markings. We've even upgraded this intersection to two-step with with pedestrian and cycling. This is going to be the first time in my memory as a cyclist that one can come down from your from your, you know, fifty, hundred mile bike ride and actually cross safely at the end or beginning of your bike ride onto the bike path. I've always taken my life in my hands crossing this this zone here since I can ever remember, since I was a child. And this will be the first time that you can do this safely with a with an actual light that is made for your turn onto this plaza. And then you have the switchbacks if you're on a bicycle or in a wheelchair. And if you want to take the shortcut stairs as a hiker, you can climb up and go through the viewing platform, pass to the Long Path stair here, and then walk into the Palisades. Again, up closer, this is shows you that that the connection to to the Long Path. Here was the existing condition in the last five to ten years. Here is the designs condition where we opened up a big plaza, created a cantilever here, the one of the lower level approaches. And then had and connected to various ways onto the bike bike and walking path. And here's the real condition at night taken from the from the air looking towards New York. A very interesting view here. This is the way we used to get to the Long Path and used to cross on the north, on the North Walk. We used to come around the Palisades on foot and then have to climb the set of stairs, walk through this caged overpass, connect to the Long Path through another stair, and then climb down the stair to come closer to getting to Fort Lee and Hudson Terrace. Now you have you have much, much easier ways and unassisted ways of getting around, no matter what kind of a user you are, you have a place to stop to contemplate the bridge and the Palisades. Here's the viewing platform during the day with the medallion I was telling you about, the sixty-inch diameter medallion, cast stainless steel. And the and these interpretive display panels that talk about the history of the bridge and the Palisades to your left. And here it is at night. We we worked with with an architectural lighting consultant for for all this so that we could have the anytime after sunset, you could still use the bridge as happily as you do during the day. And just to conclude, I'm sorry it's taken so long, but I just wanted to conclude that this is really an unprecedented moment in George Washington Bridge's history to to connect its original sidewalks to its respective communities that it serves so that someone unassisted in whatever mode of non-motorist transit, transport that they want to use can make it across this bridge themselves. And you also get to celebrate and understand and learn about the bridge in a way that you hadn't before with interpretive displays and places to rest and look at the towers. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Alex. That was fascinating, and I really appreciated all the graphic elements of of the presentation. I haven't been there myself, but I definitely now want to go check it out. I do want to open the floor to questions, starting with members of the board. Anybody on the board who has a question for Alex? Go ahead and unmute and raise your voice. Okay, Ted, are there any questions for Alex in the chat box? Okay. Ted, are there any questions for Alex in the chat box?
Yes, Chairman. Three questions that I can see. Neil Weissman, you were first.
Regina's wooden here. Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself on time. Just a quick question. Did you find it a challenge to do a community outreach? Whether it's the bikers or the people utilizing the bridge so that their asks could be incorporated in the project?
That's a great question. Thanks for the question. I would say, and Jay can help me because from a planning perspective, a lot of these questions were asked years before designers got involved. As the Port Authority moves through community outreach over a long span of time, we're not the ones that do the one shred and done. We do years of input. We do counting, well, traffic counting. We, we talk to community boards. We talk to, you know, individuals and groups on both sides of the river. We did this for years before we even were able to get the design in motion. So we definitely had outreach long before me and will have it long after me or Jay. We go through a long span of, of outreach. And, and I guess it helps that many of the people on our team in our agency, we were part of an agency-wide bicycle working group. So we often, apart from just the design we do on a specific piece of infrastructure like this, we look agency-wide and port district-wide at any kind of developments or opportunities or challenges involved in cycling and walking infrastructure, complete streets, vision zero, safe, safe movement through our facilities. And we, and we try to go back to members of our agency, our agency is large and we go back to other members of our agency to show them those opportunities and see if they can implement them. So it's not just community outreach on this, it's more, it's broader. And that was a very good question. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think I would add on to that, that, you know, we, we had, you know, years of conversation and, and data collection. One of the things we did very kind of early in the planning process was to go out and do some intercept surveys on, on the path to try and collect, you know, wide range of data about trip making behavior and demographics, but we also included, you know, a comment section. I mean, some people, you know, took time to like fill out an entire page of comments for us, you know, when, when they stopped to, to fill those out. We also had, you know, repeat meetings with like the New Jersey Bike Walk Coalition Transportation Alternatives to get, you know, very kind of detailed comments and, and input from, from, you know, kind of specialized groups that, that have an interest in this as well. Obviously, anytime you do a project of this scale, there's, there's more that you, you know, that people would like for you to be able to do that, you know, your, your schedule, your budget can't accommodate everything. But we, we feel like we really were able to hear what people's interests and concerns weren't to be able to, you know, really target the, the investments and the things that really made the biggest difference.
Great. It looks wonderful. Thank you for sharing. I think that a lot of us on the call wanna go experience it on our own, but you did a great job presenting it and it's exciting. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks Dolores for that question. Ted, you were, were you gonna read Neil's question to us?
Neil had like three comments. Maybe if he's on, he could just run through what they were rather than me try to.
Real, real quick Neil, before you get started, just to, we've all had the benefit of your insight on this bridge for a long, long time. I'm gonna apply to the questions and comments here, the same rule that we have during public, the public participation portion, which is a three, three minute limit. But by all means, we'd love to hear from you and I'm sure you've got some great questions for Alex.
John, thank you for that. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna hold off on making extended comments until public portion. The, the, the comments in the chat stand on their own, so why don't I just get, give, give you guys back the time?
Sounds good, Chairman. In addition to Neil, John Andrade made a comment in the chat hoping the increased use of cargo bikes would have encouraged wider paths. And then Tim Severner also noted that the bridge was designed to support rail. And he asked if this has been considered to get cars off the road and reduce congestion?
Jay, you want to answer the question about rail?
Um, I mean, it's, it's obviously a question that comes up from time to time. I can't say that there's been any active look at it in, in the recent past. There, there has been, you know, some consideration of, of potential, you know, future, you know, rail crossings between New York, New Jersey for like transit uses, but the, the George Washington Bridge isn't necessarily the best corridor to, to, you know, kind of meet the, the needs for different travel corridors, so. But it's, it's a concept that's out there. It's one that I'm sure we'll revisit again, you know, at, at some point when we're, when we're taking another look at, at, you know, future trans Hudson crossings.
For cargo bikes, believe me, one of the things we looked at early were all the different, what, what we wanted to consider or tried to consider as our design vehicles, right, for non-motorized transit. And what you'll find is that definition, and I'm sure that everyone on this call appreciates it, including Neil, this is an evolving and chaotic set of, of range of vehicles, not necessarily a ruly set of vehicles, right? We have, as soon as the bridge opened in February, I think the, the Port Authority Police Department was stopping, stopping motor, motorcycles on the bridge. I think within a week of opening, there were motorcycles going 50 to 60 miles an hour on the mainspan. So there is a chaos that reigns in the region with motorized and non-motorized altern, you know, alternate vehicles, let's say, that fit as a, I guess, in the widest sense of the word of active transportation or, or micro mobility, or even not, you know, this, the traditional motorcycle that I guess the guy or someone who thought that traffic was too bad on the, on the mainspan decided to take what is a really a cycling and walking shared use path and use it for their own needs. So there's, there's more to, there's much more to work on. It's not just the cargo bikes where there's, there's a try to, I think in this century, we're gonna learn how to reuse our arteries and, and regional pathways to find better ways to move. We all, we all know about the, the Rust Belt. Dortmund, 80 to 90 kilometers, super cycling, super highways where people are going extremely quickly with e-bikes and safely. Right? And that we have, we, I think we need to start thinking about that application in our region going north and south on either side of the Hudson, between the Mario Cuomo Bridge and the George Washington Bridge and start understanding that regionally, because clearly bicycles can move through a region. They, they don't only have to do the last mile or the last or the last 500 feet. They can, they can, you can travel, you can travel in it, through an entire region every day on a bicycle and not need a car at all.
Thanks, Alex. The motorcycle story, all the horrifying prompts a question for me. I know there's a whole lot of powered wheeled vehicles nowadays, electric scooters, you know, electric bicycles and other, otherwise augmented bicycles. What are the rules on what is and isn't allowed on these bicycle paths?
Jay is a guru when it comes to our Green Book. If you'd like to make a comment about the Green Book.
I, I, I only know the movie, so. Well, we, we don't need to burden everybody's time with that. I'm just, I'm curious.
It's an excellent question. It's an excellent question.
The, the line between, you know, some of these, you know, motorized bicycles and, you know, a small motorcycle is, it seems kind of small sometimes, at least in terms of noise output.
I think clearly we're in a moment of incredible disruption and evolution in our, in our forms of travel. And some of them maybe on the surface currently seem selfish. Some of them seem part of a new movement to get out of cars and move in a, a, a kind of continuous range between walking and going as fast as you can go, well, without a car. Right? And that it's becoming an entire range, like a prismatic range that it's, it's actually mind boggling to see. I, I ride over at least two or three bridges every day for my commute. And I'm, and I'm, there are so many near misses between me and, and the guys on these two, you know, and people on these going, I mean, way too quickly on these motorized two-wheel blade, blade scooters with, with, with motorcycle helmets on, weaving through, weaving through pedestrians. I don't know what to say. I think that ultimately we'll find a balance in the critical mass. If the more people use like vehicles of this speed, it may end up finding its way back into the vehicular lanes, taking over vehicular lanes. And our eight lanes of traffic, for example, on the Queensborough might, might go to six and you'll have directional travel for these high-speed micro mobility vehicles dedicated to them because they go a certain speed that's safe among, amongst them, but not safe for someone with a walker. You know, not at all safe for someone holding a, a five-year-old in one hand. It's not safe at all for them. But, but clearly amongst themselves, if they have a dedicated lane, they can do very well and it's far better than a car. So I would say that I think little by little, we're gonna just have to push back on the space of the car.
It'll, it'll be ironic if those are the vehicles that end up getting us a really good network of dedicated bike lanes.
Correct. I think that, I think you're right, Chairman. I think you're right.
All right. Well, this is very, very interesting, Alex. Ted, any other questions in the chat box?
Will Yarzab, Will Yarzab from staff asked, would bicycle jitneys be allowed and what issues might that bring?
Jay, do you have a thought about bike jitneys? Long tail bikes or bike jitneys?
I guess one, just a little more clarity on what, what you mean by bike jitney.
Will, if you want to speak up, if not, we can have Jay follow up with you. All right. I think in the interest of time, we can probably move on. We'll have Jay get back to Will offline.
Okay.
Sounds good. Alex, thank you again for that very interesting presentation. We would all be applauding if we were in the room together.
Thank you.
That brings us to item G on your agenda, Committee Reports and Action Items. And I will now call on Commissioner Jack Kelly to give the Project Prioritization Committee report. Jack?
Thank you, Chairman. I am pleased to report on the activities of the Project Prioritization Committee. At the joint committee meeting in August, the committee considered two action items. First, the committee recommended approval of our agency's self-certification. The board must self-certify the NJTPA planning process each time the Transportation Improvement Program, as we know the TIP, is adopted. This action confirms that the NJTPA complies with all relevant federal regulations and maintains the region's eligibility to receive federal transportation funding. This is listed as action item one on the agenda. Next, the committee considered the new TIP for fiscal years 2024 through 2027, along with the required air quality conformity, conformity determination. As Chairman Bartlett noted, nearly $14.3 billion in investments is programmed during the four years of the TIP. In fiscal year 2024, approximately $1.9 billion is programmed for road, bridge and other related New Jersey Department of Transportation projects and nearly $1.5 billion for the New Jersey Transit Projects and Programs. In keeping with longstanding NJTPA policy, the TIP emphasizes safety and state of good repair with more than 67% dedicated to the management and preservation of the transportation system. Please note that you have received addendums to the TIP last week. These changes are mostly due to additional federal funding made available to our region as well as some adjustments to project descriptions and timing. None of the changes altered the project list the board has been slated to approve. Changes include adding the Tonel Avenue Bridge and Utility Relocation Project, which is part of the Gateway Program, and an electric vehicle charging station project and Sinatra Drive redesign project, both in Hoboken. Four projects were also reinstated. The Route 9 Indian Head Road to Central Avenue, Hurley Avenue Pavement Project in my home county of Ocean. The Route 15 Bridge over Paul and Skell Project in Sussex County. The Route 23 Bridge over Pequonic River, Humburg Turnpike in Morris and Passaic Counties and the Route 206 Doctor's Way to Valley Road Project in Somerset County. The TIP also underwent a required air quality conformity determination. This involves modeling the total air quality impact of all the projects in the program. This analysis found that the impacts were within the budget set in the state implementation plan for addressing key pollutants. As previously mentioned, the TIP and the air quality conformity determination underwent a 30-day public comment period that included an air quality workshop and a public meeting. As the Chair noted, a summary of comments on the TIP and the responses from NJTPA, NJDOT and New Jersey Transit was posted online. They were also provided in the agenda package for today's meeting and will be included in the appendix to the TIP. The committee recommended board approval of the TIP and the accompanying air quality conformity determination. This is listed as action item number two. The committee also considered a modification to the current TIP to add federal funds to the New Jersey Transit Bus Acquisition Program. This action will cover the purchase of articulated buses and battery electric buses with funds released from the Rail Rolling Stock Procurement Program. The revision also reflects a change in the annual distribution of CMAC funds from NJDOT to New Jersey Transit to support procurement of rail rolling stock. The committee approved the modification and no further action is needed. Finally, I would like to thank the board and committee members for their flexibility in rescheduling the August Joint Committee Meeting to accommodate approval of the TIP and air quality conformity determination and for participating in the two special meetings in August to program funds available through the FHWA's August redistribution process. This is allowing 12 transit projects to advance. A big win for the state and region, as the Chairman already indicated. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Project Prioritization Committee Report.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner. As Commissioner mentioned, we have two action items from this committee on today's agenda. The first action item concerns the approval of the fiscal year NJTPA self-certification. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Union County moves, Chairman?
Thank you, and may I have a second?
No, reject it.
Thank you. Any comments from board members on this action item? Any comments from members of the public on this action item?
Nothing in the chat at this time, Chair.
Thank you, Ted. All right, Beverly, would you please call the role?
Oregon?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth? Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is approval of the fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven Transportation Improvement Program and the accompanying air quality conformity determination. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Bergen moves that motion.
Before we, uh, I'm sorry, Derek. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. We could have comments after the motion. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. We'll, we'll have comments after we have a motion in a second. Can the, the motion person please repeat and identify yourself?
Bergen moves that.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Middlesex.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any comments from the board members? Jason?
Thanks, uh, Chairman. I'm sorry for interrupting. I forgot we needed the motion a second first. Um, yes, I did want to just comment quickly on the tip. Uh, first, I want to thank you, Chairman, for your leadership, uh, and as well as Dave Behrend and Ted Ritter for circulating, uh, Warren County, uh, as a sub-region comments to the whole board. Uh, so they were aware of our concerns, uh, with our regional, uh, projects in the TIP. Um, as the board knows, for, for many years, I've been, uh, expressing my concerns with two projects in particular that I'm just gonna bring attention to. One is the Route Eighty Rockfall, which, uh, you know, we can sin, continue to have some concerns with, that we want to continue to work with the DOT in developing, uh, in making sure that the right project is done at the right cost. So, uh, you know, that's still a concern for us, but for me personally, and, and more extensively is the Route Fifty-seven and Five-Nineteen repairs and changes, uh, which have been now ongoing for thirty-one years and, uh, you know, have been pushed back from two thousand twenty-five, which we were, we were promised twenty, twenty-four, twenty twenty-five to now twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine timeframe for, for, uh, for construction. It, it's just too long. Um, and for those reasons, I am going to unfortunately, uh, vote no on the tip today, uh, and hopefully we can continue to work towards, uh, better recognition of some of the concern Warren County has, uh, with the tip. But thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for your comments. Understand where you're coming from. Any other members of the board with comments on this action item? Okay, I see in the, um, this is, this is the part where I ask for public comments, and I see in the chat that Tim Severner is asking to, uh, make a public comment on this action item. So, uh, Tim, if you're on, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, unfortunately, the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four tip continues exacerbating numerous highway widening, which never reduce congestion. Worse, the Clay Street Bridge Project actually reduces nine-foot sidewalks to six-foot sidewalks to accommodate more cars. Widening Route Seventeen, Route Eighty, adding to Routes One and Nine will not alleviate congestion. The real irony is this proposal for eleven four oh sevens link, Lincoln Tunnel access. Quote, "The Route One and Nine T Extension New Road Project will provide a new roadway parallel to Route One and Nine along the railway, railroad right-of-way in Jersey City. It will provide intermodal connections to the rail yards and divert trucks off of tenule circle in Route One and Nine, helping to ease congestion and facilitate goods movement throughout the region. The total project cost is estimated four hundred to four hundred fifty million dollars." Why would anyone build a road instead of using a rail right-of-way to ease congestion? Four hundred to four hundred fifty million can instead actually expand rail and provide roll-on, roll-off truck access to rail as being done in Germany. In Germany, they actually have trains, but they, you drive the truck up onto the, the train, and then you roll it off when you get to where you want to go. Also, I, I live in Mount Tabor, close to Denville. I do not see any reason we need more lane widenings. What we need is to improve our Montclair, Denville, um, access and also get the Lack 'em On A Cut Off finished. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Any other members of the public wishing to comment on this action item before we call the vote? Okay, um, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth? Oh, there he's gone. Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
No.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, thanks to our, uh, entire staff and partners for great work on the tip. That brings us to, uh, the Planning and Economic Development Committee. So now we will hear from Commissioner Charles Kenny, who will give the Planning and Economic Development Committee report. Charles?
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning. I am pleased to report on the activities of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. At the August joint meeting, the committee considered one action item. The fiscal year twenty twenty-four study and development program. Program consists of projects in the concept development phase, which includes planning, environmental reviews, and other activities that prepare projects to be considered for capital funding and possible inclusion in the TIP. I am pleased to report that forty-two projects in last year's program graduated into this year's draft TIP. This year's study and development program includes nineteen new projects and nine that continue to progress through concept development. Last week, the board received a revised study and development, uh, program reinstating one project, the Route Nine W Palisades Avenue to New York State Line Project in Bergen County. This is listed as action item number three on today's agenda. Also at the meeting, the committee heard a presentation about the NJTPA's recently released Regional Active Transportation Plan, which provides a blueprint for creating a safe, comfortable, and connected network for walking and biking in the NJTPA region. The plan identifies a conceptual network consisting of more than seventeen hundred miles of road, roadways recommended for walking and biking improvements across North Jersey. It also includes a strategy guide to help municipalities and counties implement the recommendations. The NJTPA will provide the ongoing support for implementing the plan, including sharing data, creating an interactive mapping tool, and offering technical assistance programs. The plan is posted on the NJTPA website. Also at the meeting, central staff briefed the committee on several IIJA funding opportunities, including the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Program. You can also find information about these grants on the NJTPA website. And, um, that is my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner. So, uh, as you heard, we have one action item from this committee on today's agenda. It is approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Study and Development Program. May I have a motion to approve?
Ocean County makes the motion to approve.
Middlesex? A second? Sorry. Oh, that was Middlesex. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Uh, any comments from board members on this action item? Okay, any comments from members of the public on this action item?
Seeing nothing in the chat at this time, Chairman?
Thank you, Ted. All right, great. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Union? Commissioner Kowalski votes yes. Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Okay, thank you. Now I will call on Commissioner Jason Sarnoski, who will give the Freight Initiatives Committee report. Jason?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I am pleased to report on the August twenty-second meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, which featured updates on the federal and state funding opportunities for freight projects. The first speaker was Tom Morkan from the U.S. Myer Time Administration, known as MARAD, M-A-R-A-D. Among the programs he highlighted was the Port Infrastructure Development Program, which awards grants on a competitive basis to projects that improve port safety and efficiency. He gave the example of Red Hook Container Terminals receiving a one point three million grant to work with the Used Marine to modify a barge for cross-harbor use. Next, Farazan Ahmed of NJDOT briefed the committee on programs managed by the NJDOT Office of Grants Management. She de- detailed the application process for the state's Rail Freight Assistance Program, which provides twenty-five million annually to improve freight rail facilities and infrastructure. Ms. Ahmed, uh, said the office also provides aviation-related grants and oversees freight-related projects under the Federal Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program for New Jersey. Uh, the next speech speaker, Kyle Scala of NJDOT, said the Division of Local Aid provides grants to municipalities and counties, including the Local Freight Impact Fund, an annual thirty, uh, point one million statewide competitive funding program to mitigate impacts on local transportation systems across the state's freight industry. Our final speaker, Ricky Clark of the Federal Highway Administration New Jersey Division Office, said that while few of the U.S. Department of Transportation's forty discretionary grant programs focused exclusively on freight projects, they frequently qualify under various other programs. Examples he noted included the, uh, Infra Program, INFRA, which targets multimodal freight and highway initiatives with national or regional importance, and the Rural Surface Transportation Grant Program, which supports projects aimed at enhancing transportation infrastructure in rural regions. Mr. Clark highlighted a range of federal resources available to potential applicants to explore grant opportunities for freight. Also at the meeting, committee members updated us on their freight planning activities. The committee was informed that the Federal Highway Administration approved the twenty twenty-three statewide freight plan in June. The Southern Middlesex County Freight Movement Study is expected to be released later this month, and the city of Newark will use one of four grants received from the Local Freight Impact Fund to proceed with improvements to Duramus Avenue to enhance pedestrian access to the port area. This concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee report. Thank you, Chairman.
Oh, all right. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Um, that brings us to the public participation. Portion of the meeting, we will call on people in the order that they signed up. Please request to comment or ask questions in the chat box, or wait until we call for comments from those of you joining by phone. Also, please remember to mute yourselves when you're not speaking. As a reminder, we advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit on comments. The time will be displayed on the screen while each person is speaking. Also, keep in mind that this is being, uh, broadcast and, uh, your comments will become part of the public record this public meeting. Ted, have any members of the public signed up in advance to speak at today's meeting?
Uh, yes, Chairman. First up is Neil Weisman, and Neil has also, um, posted a link to his public comments in the chat. Neil, go ahead.
Okay, um, Chairman Bartlett, Director Behren, trustees, good morning. We're still morning. Um, a link to, you've got the, the link in the chat. I encourage everyone to please click on it as I speak. Um, it'll, it'll make it a lot, lot easier to do that. Um, I also asked it to be included in the minutes. Uh, regarding the North Walk, uh, I spoke to this in March. The detail work is beautiful, but it doesn't safely support current use and it has no capacity for growth. I've since learned that the agency is now asking cyclists to walk their bikes across, something it doesn't do on the Ashtoe compliant Bayonne and Gothles Bridges. Um, today I will share with you an account of a crash on the Manhattan Bridge Bike Path and its implications for the George. Um, completed in nineteen oh nine, the Manhattan is the youngest of the three bridges connecting to Brooklyn. It has seven lanes for cars, four subway tracks, and a pair of ten-foot wide paths, one for pedestrians, other for cyclists. On July twenty-sixth at eleven thirty P M, there was a head-on collision involving multiple scooters and pedal cyclists. An ICU nurse came upon the scene and called nine-one-one. All riders sustained injuries, some critical. She and others posted accounts on Reddit. Fair warning, they are really graphic. Um, word spread quickly through the cycling community. Some cyclists called for scooters to be licensed and banned from bridges. Others demanded that bike lanes be widened and to hold accountable the apps that incentivize delivery workers to ride as fast as possible. I have long feared that a catastrophic craft, crash of this nature on the George would compel the agency to make all users walk. But then what? The George is the sole bikeable Hudson crossing out of North Jersey, and congestion pricing is certain to fuel a surge in micro-mobility. Um, the next thing you should see is a map of the Port District depicting environmental justice communities in New York and New Jersey. Uh, we know that traffic and air pollution coming off the George have long impacted these communities, but its paths provide access to jobs and green space. And since climate legislation, say, both federal and state sets aside funds for these communities, it follows that path enhancements across the George should be eligible. Finally, no matter how well-designed, there will always be crashes on bikeways. But proper design can minimize the frequency and severity and insulate the operator from litigation. A single ten-foot wide bi-directional bikeway, say, under the South Path, replicates the Manhattan Bridge. It also frees up the walkways for exclusive use by, by pedestrians. Two ten-foot paths get you a pair of unidirectional bikeways that enable safe passing, eliminate threat of head-on collisions, and create capacity to support regional bike share. Thank you. I'll, I'll take questions if you like.
Thank you very much, uh, Neil. I appreciate that and appreciate your posting the link in the chat. Ted, has anybody else signed up, uh, in advance to speak?
Uh, yes, um, uh, Ken Vogel signed up. I'm not certain he's on the call. Uh, Ken, are you with us? I don't think he is. I didn't see his name in the lineup. He had previously signed up, but I wasn't able to reach him prior to this meeting to confirm.
Okay.
That's everybody. That's everybody who signed up in advance, sir.
Okay, great. Well, I will open the floor for a moment for anybody who's dialed in to unmute and let us know your name and that you'd like to speak.
Looks like Tim Severner, Tim Severner would like to speak. Uh, Tim, you've got three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, yes. Um, unfortunately, th- th- this, this plan, while, while it does include good things for walking and biking, which is major progress, and also New Jersey Transit has been improving train stations, raised platforms, and ADA accessibility. Unfortunately, we haven't extended a single rail line since two thousand nine. Um, we, we have to, when are we gonna finish the Hudson Bergen Light Rail? The Inglewood at least, and continue? The Inglewood at least, and continue on, as Tenafly? When are, are we gonna, um, electrify our rail? There's nothing in your plans for that. We talk a lot about electric vehicles. Electric rail is the most efficient land transportation there is, uh, outside of walking and biking. And yet, there's key segments not electrified. From Montclair State to Denville should be electrified. Um, from Long Branch to Bayhead should be electrified. We talk a lot about electric transportation. We already have three hundred thousand riders of electric, of existing electric rail. We need more electric rail. We need to electrify these segments. The Raritan Valley Line is not electrified. We need to get serious. I, I, I'm not kidding about getting rail across the George Washington Bridge. We have wildfires, we have floods, and meanwhile, people are driving as much or more than ever because they don't really have transit options. Once again this morning, I just got an alert that all the end station is being directed to Hoboken. Once again, since, since two thousand nine, my rail line, the Morse line, has lost thirty percent of its Hoboken trains since two thousand nine. That's fifteen years ago. When are we going to run the trains? Meanwhile, I hear that rail rolling stock was redirected to buy buses? We, we have to get serious. We need to get electric rail. We need to get light rail. We also need that rail rides away should be used like the Essex Greenway, Hudson Essex Greenway should be rail with trails so that people can ride their bikes. Not everybody is somebody who can ride fifty miles. But people might put their bikes on a light rail and then take it and then ride back. If there's bad weather, they can get back on the light rail. We have to get serious about restoring our rail, extending our rail, and electrifying the rail as much as possible. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I, I know that, uh, on the topic of the Hudson-Bergen Light Rail, or as we hopefully call it out by me, the Hudson-Bergen Passaic Light Rail, um, uh, there's not been good news lately, and I joined my colleagues in Bergen County to be disappointed in that. But, uh, thank you for your comments. Uh, anybody else, Ted, or anybody else on the phone, before we move along?
Nothing else in the chat, by the way, Chairman.
Okay, well, we give the phone folks a little pause, uh, before Tim's comments, so I think we're all set there. That brings us to letter I. We're nearly to the end. The time and place of our next meeting, the NJTPA Board will be live and in person back at NJTPA's offices in Newark on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at ten thirty A.M. Please join us. And now may I have a motion to adjourn?
West County moves to adjourn.
Second, Port Authority?
All right. Thank you very much. Before I give everybody the chance to say aye, uh, let me just add my, uh, good wishes, uh, Mike Russo, uh, on your last meeting and your retirement, uh, and everything that comes after. So thank you very much for being part of this team for so many years. And with that, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
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 Bye.
See you all in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Nice job, Alex. Nice job, Jay.
Thanks, Ted. That was, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.